Because they're going to combine dispatch.
Ready?
Yeah, don't start this meeting out that way.
You got a new building, you got a new road.
Live? Okay. We will.
Good there, I appreciate the loud talking.
All right. Okay, we're going to begin the November meeting for the Davis County Council on Thursday, November 12th. Normally, we're on Wednesday, but due to Veterans Day, we're on Thursday. I'd also like to commend our veterans that served our country and thank them for what they've done for celebration throughout the county yesterday. Also like to acknowledge our first, the county council's first meeting in the new government center. Very accommodating, very nice facility. And welcome everyone to who's attended this meeting in person and virtually. So we'll have a roll call here. So we have Matt Meredith who's calling in. Virtually, he's here.
Mike Sprinkle here.
Dave Smith.
Here.
Joanne McCracken.
Here.
Tony Dungeon.
Here.
Mike Myers.
Here.
We're all present.
All right, first thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes for October 14th and October 27th. Everybody have a chance to look those over? October 27th meeting was a special meeting for the town of Illinois. Regarding their 2021 budget.
I just got one clarification on the Bennington Levy part down there. It says Steve Myers and Robert Memery, Bennington Levy Board Members. Robert is not a board member, but he is a representative of the Levy that is working on the package for construction that's coming up. So Steve would be a board member and Robert would just be a representative of the board. And you all didn't know that, and I should have told you before you sent these out, but.
With that change, I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Motion by Dave Smith.
Second.
Second by Tony Dungeon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Second, item number two, Sheriff's Department Phone System. We have some bids here, or a bid contract from RTC Communications Montgomery. Sent out is who, Gary? Was it approved, or I don't know if we talked about it? Let me just look here.
Hey. I think they need to go to the mic so the people can hear.
What's that?
People are going to speak into the mics, you said? Because they can't hear.
Yeah, you might want to go to the podium, Gary, just for the microphone for. Yeah, yeah. I thought we had already approved that, you guys, the last time.
Gary, I think there's some confusion. We're dealing with AT&amp;T Communications and then the RTC. So you differentiate the two, because I think we talked about the ATT.
We talked about AT&amp;T with commissioners, but the new phone system from RTC, we did not get discussed before the commissioners. I remember I said I put the horse before the cart and got their approval before I got the commission approval.
I remember us talking about it at last meeting, but as I looked through the minutes, there was no action taken.
Yeah, I don't think there was. From what I'm seeing, you guys have got the AT&amp;T, which, or AT&amp;T, which the commissioner signed for a year. And I hope to be rid of and done with AT&amp;T sometime in the middle of the year. With the new phone system and getting rid of AT&amp;T, I think our phone bill goes from 750 a month to 300 a month. So in the long run, I think the rate of return is about three years and we'll have the phone system paid for just by not having to pay AT&amp;T.
Kind of where I remember that conversation.
No, I don't think we did it.
Yeah, hey, Matt.
Hey, how is that, this is integrated into the, this will be integrated so that the government center can call you locally as well, right?
Right. The government center, the courthouse.
The systems are the same, so it should integrate phone.
Right.
Yeah, I think that was the goal, to get it all on.
Right.
The Avaya system and.
Yeah. But the commissioners, I believe, signed the one-year contract with AT&amp;T. I don't remember anything. I don't think you have a dog in that fight with AT&amp;T. No, I don't remember any conversation with AT&amp;T. Other than we just did the one-year contract, it stood three. And we hope to be out of it by. So the terms of the contract, that look okay to you? I mean, it looks like there's action on both sides. AT&amp;T's. Dale with the RTC contract. Yeah, yeah, Dale, Dale's been helping me with that. Yeah, Falcon Bush has been, yeah, we're, we're happy to get it, get it going, get it started process. But I'll make sure it's on the commissioner's meeting next time, because I think they have. Yeah, Patty?
For clarification then, the 36,0030285, are you asking for funding for this?
I thought I already had.
Okay, so did we determine, did the council determine where that's coming from? Do you recall?
I don't think we did.
I don't think we took action.
I think that's perhaps why it's back on.
Is that what, is that what, yeah, okay. I know the 911 fund cannot pay for it because it's now, it's administrative phone lines. That fund will not pay for it. I, I know that right off the top of my.
There's easily that amount of money in the riverboat funds right now. What rest do you think?
That probably sounds like the likely place to get it from.
I mean, obviously, the generals got enough in there too, but. I don't know.
I think I'd rather take it out of Riverboat than try to take it out of General at this point.
I would too. I would too, Matt.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Got a pretty good balance there.
All right, I'll make the motion. We take 36,030285 out of the riverboat fund for the upgraded phone system.
The motion by Mike Sprinkle, second by Matt Meredith. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries.
Kent.
Thank you.
So the question now is, is that going to be needed before the end of the year, Gary? Or is this the timing for the money?
We don't get it done by the end of the year, then I'll have to ask for it again, right?
Well, we, we're just trying to time the appropriation process.
Yeah.
Do we need to go ahead and, you need to go ahead and do the appropriation paperwork out of the riverboat, or else you can't spend it, so.
Out of the riverboat, okay, yeah, I'll get it done. We'll get it done by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, very good. Thanks, Patty. Thank you. All right, Westgate bond.
Kent, our office put that on in particular to two questions. We've had ongoing discussions, council has, on the Westgate balance. But then our question, the reason we're putting it on there is the payment previously was 95.5 and it was paid in February and August. And historically, the half of that, one payment was out of TIF fund, 4502. One payment was out of the Edit Fund, 1112. And so now with that payment that you had made, that has reduced the amortization schedule and the payment is 46,000. So our question is, do you want to continue to pay the 46,000 in February? One out of TIF, one out of Edit, August. Do you want to follow that protocol that we've been doing, or, that's our question from the auditor's office. So the, the TIF fund, your balance, you have your sheet there. 204,34495, then you see the Edit balance too. So I know there's been a lot of discussions over the plans for both of those funds, but we just wanted clarification.
What's the, any other options?
Well, you can make all that payment out of the TIF fund, which originally, the reason why there was not enough TIF money accumulated in there to pay both of the payments. And so it was split, one payment out of TIF and one payment out of Edit. Now, there would be enough funds if you wanted to change that, but.
Take it all out of TIF?
That's your, your choice on, I'm not sure what plans for the TIF balance that would be through RDC. If there's any projects, plans for that balance.
Really, we don't need to make that decision right now, but you're just bringing it up as an option.
I wanted to ask.
Some people to.
Yes, ask your clarification before we start making, well, we have a payment due February. So we'll do the appropriation paperwork, so we needed to make sure that we knew where to pull it from.
Possibly by, before the end of the year, the next meeting. Want some clarification on that back up.
That would be great.
So something to think about there and want to keep in touch with Patty and then we'll what we want to do there. Options are to keep it half out of TIF, Westgate TIF, half out of Edit. That's how it was, or yes, the other likely options, take it all out of the TIF fund. Westgate TIF doesn't pull them short. Is there any?
Hey, the Edit tends to be a more flexible fund. You can use it for a lot more things. So just a thought, if you wanted to use TIF for all of it, I, I, I do recall, and maybe others can chime in, that was the desired source for that payment, but obviously, it's your decision. But if now we've got sufficient TIF to cover the whole payment, because TIF is less flexible, it might make sense to come from that source. That's all.
To me, that's what I, what I'm feeling. Since, since now they're able to make the entire payment out of TIF. And freeing up money in Edit, because if something came up, you could pull it out of Edit easier than TIF. Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
And we know we've got some commitments out of Edit coming up.
Right.
So we can free up a little bit of money there, it wouldn't hurt.
What is the balance on that bond?
Like, how is 1,008,000 scheduled for the last payment?
26. Thank you.
So, I don't know, it seems like, does that, we make a decision on that for you now, or we have some time to wait? Through the fact it's been put out and have any other comment? Okay. Look, can we put it on next agenda for December and?
Add it to the agenda in December?
Yeah. Okay. Questions, discussion, comments? Matt?
No, I, I think like, you know, that, that, you know, we, we need to look, see if we have any projects going on, but I think it's ideal to take it out of TIF, but we'll, we'll table until next, next week.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Okay, number, item number four, CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Grant, 8902.
So that was before the commissioners on Tuesday. The resolution is being finalized, so the resolution is not complete yet. You were all, we see the information that we got from the state regarding the money on that. So right now, there, there's been quite a few changes on the process. And the biggest one is for the monies to be used for the public health and safety, and all those payroll dollars will be submitted. So the discussion and the recommendation was to go with option two. And I believe I spoke with all of you pretty much on the reasoning for that. Would bring that money in-house, it would be reseeded into County General. And with the statute, you're allowed to move that money to rainy day, which then I'm asking that council and commissioners would have a policy to distribute those funds still following some of the same IFA guidelines.
So again, basically, information on what you.
Well, just update on the commissioners waiting on that resolution. That's going to be at their next meeting, then council and commissioners to work together. We'll have to have another resolution to move that money from County General, once it's reseeded to rainy day. After that fact, we need to establish policies and procedures for how you want that money appropriated dispersed.
What is that dollar amount?
Currently, it looks to be a little bit above $800,000 left in that money. We do have some outstanding plans that was distributed out of 8902, for instance, the one that was prior approved from the IFA for the body scanner for the Sheriff's Department. That now has been rejected. I got a phone call on that. So, but we'll have the money in-house, we'll just have to move the money to pay for that. Getting with State Board of Accounts on the timing of that with the end of the year with those budget line items. So there's quite a few details still to be worked out, but just updating you on the process of where it was with the commissioner.
The body scanner can't be.
No, it, it was prior approved by the IFA, but it was not processed. Now all the changes, now they're rejecting it because they're going to just send the money to the county and then the county will pay for it. So it's not rejected, it's just a matter of the payment and how now the payment's going to be processed in-house. Yes, the procedures have changed, so.
Right. I see.
So that's the important part, the ongoing communication and conversations that we have in developing those policies and procedures, so that we have a plan and everybody's on the same page.
Good luck, they don't change again, aren't they?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure. Okay, any other questions on that or any comments? Sure.
One of the reasons I'm here today is for you to consider, to the extent we ever get to find out what this money is going to be used for, I don't want to take it away from Gary or whatever else. He's in front of, in front of the line as far as I'm concerned, but my APS unit is effectively defunded at this point because of the, they don't have the balance of their previously awarded package for insurance and other benefits. That was taken away because it didn't line up with the grant. Look, I'm not going to get into the part of that, but I'm asking that you consider using some of this COVID response money for my APS unit, who are actually on the front lines, working with elderly population in the nursing home, to. And look, your decision is 100% right. Other counties should have to bear this burden as well, because we're going to benefit Knox, Green, U-Boys. We are, and I don't pretend otherwise. Here's the deal. None of those counties can hold a candle to how well this one is run. And I'm more than willing to try to ask them for the money. Problem is, their budgets are already set and it's, it's just not going to happen. I mean, I can go through the theater of doing it for you, but for us to continue after about January 1, we've got to have some kind of benefit package in place. That's really the only reason these people are in this job. Most of them are kind of underemployed anyway, but they're really attracted because they, because of their life situation, being able to get benefits really makes sense for them. I know there's some discussion over how this can fit in our budget and I'm going to take full responsibility on that, you know? If, if the way things are being perceived here is that it can't exceed the grant, which we don't even call it a grant in prosecutor land, so it's a little confusing for me. But to the extent that I presented a budget that was impossible to fill, I take full responsibility. But what I'm hoping is that at least you would consider using some of this other money to fill this out. The other thing I'm willing to do is, I've have, I'm having my individual APS workers go out and get individual quotes for what it would take for their health insurance. And not, not even, even if you don't want to consider them part of the umbrella. And it's a lot less money than the, than the county, you know, it's about, for one of them, it's $830 a month, which is roughly 10,000 a year. And for three of them, it was almost $50,000 a year for them to go through the county. So we're doing, we're doing our part to sharpen our pencil as much as we can here. And I'm thinking that if we could get $30,000 in that range, it would probably be enough to keep them going. Here's another thing. All I'm asking for is a lifeline through June of next year to be able to present a budget to the state for our contract that would include all of this. I mean, I'm not asking, I totally agree with your decision. I want you to understand that. It's not one of these where it's fundamentally a problem, like I think you guys are crazy and you're right, other counties should do this. They should. And Davis County has been footing the bill for a long time. That's, and, and this is the time and the climate to really consider doing that. I totally agree. If you look at the rest of my budgets, it totally reflects that. I didn't add any, I mean, all of my prosecutors are on a salary freeze for this year. I knew how tough this was going to be. So I just want you to consider either finding a way to come up with that money or using some of this COVID response money, because these are frontline workers who are working with the most vulnerable population for this virus. So to the extent I, you know, horned in, and if, and if you're, I don't pretend to be the person that understands the accounting. I want to be a good partner with Patty on this. If it can't go in the category that I submitted, you know, my opinion of whether it's a grant or a contract, which is what we call it, is irrelevant. I want to be a good partner here and I want to be, put it on a balance sheet that makes sense. I just don't know where that is. This is a new development, you know? This kind of train has been chugging along for 20-plus years. And the benefit package, I think, was on the commissioner's side of it, and now it's on the prosecutor's side. So you're seeing it differently. So hopefully, that presents a possibility for you. Hopefully, that's a way that we can serve our community here. I don't think it's a huge number, but it's still money that whenever we're in this kind of budget cycle and tax income is down, that you really need to consider. I, I get it, but I'm, I'm not sure this is the place, you probably want to trim too much. So I'm happy to answer questions or.
What was that original dollar amount, please?
So just off the top of my head, the original dollars, it was, it was in the $50,000 range. What I did was I submitted a $250,000 budget. And here's the way I think about it, and this could be 100% wrong. That's my budget to serve APS for Davis County everybody. And then my contract with the state is about 200,000, so 199 something. And so what was cut out was the difference. And I think Patty rightfully said that if this is a grant, you can't add more than that. The problem is probably, well, the problem is on me. I don't see it as a grant because the statute, and I, I mean, if you guys want to see the statute, I'll, I won't bore you with it, but the way we think about it in prosecutor's land is that it's a contract and that, and this, and this may run afoul of hundreds, if not thousands, of accounting rules. I just don't know. But the way that we think about it is this, here's my budget for APS, 250,000. And here's what the state gives us to help run that, 200,000. And that's kind of how it's run since the beginning. We can't even figure out how long it's been in place that way. But I'm all in favor of cleaning things up and doing them a little bit better, but in the process, they got three people wondering if they are going to have a job, you know, that is going to pay a living wage January 1. And so I'm just trying to figure out a way to help that, help those three people. And at the same time, really make sure that we have the services in place to help the elderly population, because this winter's not going to be much better than last winter. So just throwing that out as a concept, I think maybe the CARES Act money is a good fit. I don't know. And I do want you to know that I'm, I'm only going to try to get to June. And I've told the state that I don't plan on this being the case for much longer and that if they're not willing to fund it, I got to make a really hard decision as to whether we can continue this program. I mean, that's, as you well know, there's a lot of people that work in county government solely for the benefits. I mean, there's a lot of sacrifice there, so. I just wanted to present that as a possibility for some of this. I don't want to take away from what Gary's asking for, for his sheriff's deputies, obviously, they're the very definition of frontline workers. Same thing for others that might be in line. I just want you to consider them with everybody else if that works for you.
So your need or want is 25 to 30,000?
Yeah, that's what I think.
To get you to June.
I think we, I, here's the quote, my, so like I said, I want to sharpen my pencil. I'm not just going to come in and ask again, right? That's just not, oh, please, you know. One of my workers, her family, that her insurance quote was about 830 a month. You do the math on that, that's roughly 9,900, let's call it 10. But three people, I would think 30 would get us really close to that. You know, I had Rob doing some other creative moving around in the budget with other things. I haven't had a chance to talk to Patty very much, but I have a feeling it's probably not going to work. But we're, we're doing, we agree with you in principle, like even, I get it, I, I want to be able to have other counties chip in, and we're going to try to do that. I just can tell you that's going to be ceremonial at this point, because their budgets are already in also.
Why are you only requesting for June?
Because that's one, that's a great question. So our contracts are with the state, run June to June, you know, end of June. So it's like on the, you know, they do the mid-year, we do. So it's like on the, you know, they do the mid-year, we do the beginning of the year. And that would give me the opportunity to go submit to the state the full amount and say, hey, look, Davis County has been subsidizing this program for years, fairly or unfairly. And if you want us to keep this running, here's the real, here's the true budget. I'm optimistic, maybe falsely, maybe overly optimistic, but I feel like with the governor winning reelection, there's going to be less scrutiny on him and that maybe some of the state coffers will open up just a little bit for some of these kinds of programs. They're under a real tight crunch as well. But I'm under, I'm at the point where I have to make a really hard choice as to whether this is something we can continue on or not. Because if I can't live up to the level of my obligation, the state needs to take it back over. While I signed a contract with the state, I'm saying to them, I can do this job. And the fact is, if I have one person serving seven counties and, you know, hundreds of thousands of people are there about...
And they're not doing the job.
I can't make that statement. Yeah, I can. I can say I have the post filled, right? I can say that I have a person, but that's not the level of my obligation and that's not how I'm going to do business.
So that contract is negotiable or there are multiple contracts in the state like this? They're all the same? They're all different?
Yeah, it's all negotiable with me. I mean, I think I can get some movement on it. I just never had to, right? I mean, I just submitted what... But yeah, it's different. There's 13, there's 15 different units. I'm worried, I think that's right. And people are always getting different numbers and...
So there's some, there's hope.
There's...
You can...
Well, it's very frustrating too. And I mean, let's put all cards on the table. And I'm sorry for hijacking this meeting of everybody, but APS is a subsidiary of FSSA, which is a multi-billion dollar state agency. And the fact that we're always begging for crumbs off the table is frustrating to all the prosecutors that are involved, particularly since this is a really needed service right now. I mean, these, you know, my people are going into houses that are full of bedbugs and rats and trying to get people out and making sure that they're getting the care that they need because they're not being taken care of on their own. And I worry that that situation is just going to continue to deteriorate as lockdowns come in place and people are even more socially distanced and nobody's going to check on the elderly populations that we have. And I just think that they're kind of owed something, you know? They're owed just the basic standard of care to make sure somebody's giving them some dignity in the later stages of their life.
I'd like to see us be able to give him some assurance that we're going to help him out through June, give him time to work with other counties and try to get in the state, try to get this funding. But it's a really good program. I've been involved with it and helping, calling them for help for people that have really been taken advantage of or different reasons. And so I think it's really a good program. I mean, we spend $50,000 on a lot of programs that don't do near as much good as this does.
Is that a motion?
It is a motion.
I'll second.
Question, is it an allowable expense under the CARES Act?
That was my question.
Sorry, I forgot to turn the mic on. I'm working with a HR consultant out of Indianapolis over some of the details. He and I are both working with State Board of Accounts over it. So yes, it's possible that, to answer your question, is it money that you can spend from the CARES? Possibly. I believe it is, in my opinion. Some of the other situations as far as the health insurance, working with the HR on that as far as some of the legalities of that and some of his proposals. So definitely working through details, the gist of what Dave said of supporting that and then working out the details of where the money's going to come from is still what's needed to be done.
Is there any issue with, like he discussed, getting their own insurance?
Possibly. With HR consultant, that's what I had a conversation with her yesterday.
I didn't think about that. I didn't think about...
So there are some possible ramifications of that from certain legalities with...
But even at that, we're talking 50,000 approximately?
I just wanted to show I was putting the effort in, you know? I mean, I just wanted you to know it's worthy of us to try to...
To clarify a little bit to Dan's point, a contract and a grant, many times those terms are used interchangeably. A contract is a grant. The whole key to this is the revenue source. And so the revenue source for Adult Protective Services is from that contract from the state. And that's where we were at during budget time. So it's completely, as we talked about then, as a council, it is completely up to you to entertain his question for additional funding from other sources. And that's still on the table. So, but that particular day, the only option you had with the budget and the revenue source was to make the action that you did that day. So ongoing, you know, discussions and trying to figure out... I'm supportive of his request in regards to try to get this through to June and then he's making plans to work with the state to revamp their ask basically on their contract, right?
Right. In... I said I...
Did we, I mean, should that motion be based on intent? I mean, I think we all fully support Ron, you know, and we appreciate his efforts. Should the motion be more of an intent based on the rules than an actual motion to approve? I mean, we're doing a little bit of research as well, right? So will we revamp that motion or not?
Why can't we make it that we're going to do it, but it can be reimbursed by the CARES?
That's my hope. That's exactly what I was hoping.
That's my clarifying.
I agree.
I don't have a problem going ahead as long as it goes to accounting and everything's okay.
I agree. Look, I want to be a, I want to be a good partner. I don't know how to do that. I'm more than willing to say it. I mean, I'm not your guy. I mean, I'm just not your guy when it comes to the accounting piece. I really, that's why we have other experts. And then, but I appreciate your consideration on this particular thing. And like I said, I'm going to, I'm going to live up to the end of my bargain. I mean, I'm going to do what I can do to make sure we don't really have to present this again.
Do the other counties just not have the money or...
Yeah, here you go. They don't have the money for any... All right.
So what counties are we talking?
Du Bois might have it. Green does not. Knox does not. Pike does not. Martin does not. I mean, they're just not, I mean, we're not in the universe of possibility there. I mean, I would be more than willing to go to those county councils and present to them. But I know full well that it's just too easy of a no and they have such an easy out in that they can say, hey, our budget's already been submitted and done and so we don't have a place put in for this. And so I'm more than willing to try to keep doing that. I just want a, I just want an island I can swim to so that the next time we talk, you can at least say, well, it looks like Dan did his job, right? That he at least tried and shook the bushes and we're, and that's not a problem. We have a multi, I can let, talk about, we have a multi-stage process in place right now with people who are at the state level, people that are at the county level, and then people that are looking for other funding sources altogether. So, I mean, it's not like we're doing nothing at all. You definitely got my attention. And I just, I'm just saying right now, this is a simple ask just to get me to where I need to go so that I can hopefully present to you success or at least explain to you failure, right? That's where I'm at.
Could we put these other counties on notice?
Yes.
That in 2022?
Yeah, absolutely.
This is going to be gone?
So...
Yeah, their budgets are set for '21, but for 2022?
Totally agree. And that letter is ready to go. And I'm the one that is sitting on it because I wanted the election to go through. You all know how that can process decision-making. But that letter is ready to go. Like I said, that letter is going out to the county councils and I'm willing to go to all of their meetings and talk to them all in person. That's not a problem. There's also the state people are on notice that we're on shaky ground here in Davis County if something can't happen in terms of you fully funding us. You've taken advantage of this process for years and the good graces of this county. And I think you're doing your job by saying, hey, that doesn't make sense for us right now going forward. At least without some effort, you know? Like if you're going to ask me to pay this bill year after year, at least show me that this is the only alternative to keeping this program going. That's my, I feel like that's 100%.
And the way I see it, it looks like it's a regional program that was funded by the state for these counties and to serve these counties. And it was really hosted in Davies County.
That's right.
It could have been hosted anywhere. And somehow it appears Davies County has funded this, rather with their money and with state money, which in my opinion probably shouldn't have never happened. You know, it should have been headed off, and I know programs grow and then it's like, well, we need a little money or it comes from somewhere. So I can see the other counties looking at that and say, this was, this was the original intentions of this program and how it was formed and set up. And it's kind of your fault that you started paying into it and we...
Yeah, they're...
Need to. Now, hopefully they won't see it that way, but you, like, again, you've got a fight on your hands.
Well, here's the other cell.
Or to get the counties together to go to the state and say, look, as a region...
Yes.
We need more money to fund this program. The costs go up. So I think that's probably the best way to start out rather than looking, you know, we shouldn't have been funding in this individually originally to start with.
That's a terrific point. The other thing is no one can even figure out how this even start. I mean, I've gone back to Byron who's before me and Judge Smith and, you know, how the county benefits even begin. And it goes way back, probably 20 years. Here's the flip side to it. It employs Davis County people. I mean, I think Rob might have moved to Green County, my director, but two of the three are Davis County people. So I like that, you know what I mean? I like the idea that we're providing good jobs for people who are in our community, who are terrific ambassadors for what we're doing here, and that's what they are. You know, they're, I like to say this, but they're both underemployed in my opinion. But they have a real passion for working with these people and they're ambassadors in the great things that we do here. So I probably talked too much. Appreciate your comment, though.
So Patty, does this need to be done as like an additional appropriation at a meeting?
We will have to go through several steps. There still need some discussions and determinations made. I think the ask is legitimate. You've got information before you. I can check on some of the CARES Act qualifications and I can send you that via email and you can review it. I think once we get that CARES Act money in-house and we move it from County General to Rainy Day, it will be at your discretion on what that money is spent for. At that time, does it fit that? I think yes, in my opinion, right at this moment. So it's a real possibility that that could happen easily and get him through to June. And we would just have to follow through on the timeline with the appropriation paperwork. And that, it goes back to earlier, my conversation of why we are in need of a policy and procedures for that money that's moved to the Rainy Day Fund so that everyone is communicating and on the same page with the use of those dollars.
And I think if we do it that way, then that money could be appropriated to his program. That's what we're looking at, the flexibility of that.
I like the two-way-go idea that you're approving it, but if we can get it to be refunded or covered by CARES Act, that's the best way.
We have a little bit of time still on our side right now to work through the details. There's, no one is affected adversely from an employment status or a pay status at this time, correct?
Till January.
So we do have a little bit of time.
Here you go. I mean, I think they're up for a vote, but I just want, I just want to be able to tell my people they can sleep tonight. You see what I mean? That's it.
Well, in my opinion, going back, and really we need to disregard all the discussions on the original motion. If we can have a motion to pursue appropriation or legalities, whatever you need to do, pursue funding for his program from the CARES Act money. And that's really all we can do is we can approve the, sue to this.
Revamp those motions a little bit based on that information.
So at the end of the day, it's going to be covered one way or the other. Is that correct?
I believe that it can be.
For me, that's the definitive motion. That's our intent that one way or the other, to let him know that it will be handled till June. Is that correct?
You just have to apply the revenue source of what you're tying that motion to.
That's a little different. No, that's a little more in-depth than just, you know, pursuing it because there's no guarantee there in that.
Right.
But, so however you want to do it, whatever your wishes are.
There again, there again, you know, we got a few sources that we could fund it from. We would prefer, I think, all of us to use CARES money if we could, but if we can't, do we want to go ahead with it? I think that's where we're at right now. And I think most people are indicating that they would want to go ahead with it. So I think the motion and the second that we've got is good. And then we need to put our heads together and find out a few more things where that funding would come from then, so.
We're not going to stop working on it. Just like some assurance.
You've got an assignment.
Done.
So a parachute. And I know you, there's been some changes in funding and it's hit, not you, but some other programs. But if you're, you know, sincere, and I know you are about, trying to stand on your own two feet in this program, then that's...
No problem. Give it a run. All right, thanks.
We have a motion on the floor, yeah.
Maybe clarify.
Yeah, we need to clarify. So have a motion by Dave Smith to... I'm worried.
I think it's to cover the funding of June for them regardless of funding source.
Up to $30,000.
$50,000.
We won the amount on that.
$50,000, $55,000, I think is the difference.
Up to $55,000?
I think it's approximately $55,000.
Up to $55,000?
To the end of June, right?
Till June of 2021.
Dan, if you don't get this insurance for $30,000, you need $50,000. What were you short? Is that correct?
Yeah, here you go. Right, because the $30,000, this is the crazy part about county government and just government in general. The $30,000 on the private sector would be an easy, yeah, no problem. But because of the way things work in our HR system, it might have to be the full 55 just to make sure we get to the... I mean, I just want you to know I'm willing to do this. But I don't, if it's a no-go because of the HR, I don't think that's going to work. I mean, it's, and that's not a factor I consider, quite frankly.
Well, I guess my motion would be that we would fund this program up to $50,000.
55,000.
55,000. Or up to June, covering to through June.
All right.
And then we'd have to reevaluate it at that time, resubmit.
Work. Okay. Have a motion by Dave Smith. Second, Tony Duncian, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carried unanimously.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay. Twenty twenty-one council calendar.
He talks.
Have that, prove that calendar. So you have the twenty twenty-one schedule in front of you and of course, August and September budget hearings and budget adoptions are to be determined. I don't see conflicts from it.
As far as I'm concerned, I would move to approve. I'm sorry, go ahead, Matt.
He's, he doesn't, he doesn't have a comment. He doesn't.
He had no conflict.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would move to uh approve this uh schedule as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mike Sprinkle, second by Mike Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries unanimously. Matt, okay. Twenty twenty-one council appointments. And we don't have to uh make the decisions on these today. Because it's really just brought before us in public meeting today. Um, so. I mean, those present here, we can kind of, Mike, you're on the Bennington Levy Board. Is that gonna be?
Yeah, I, I will do it in the SIDC.
Okay. And so you've got those two, uh, Dave Smith on the EDC. Dave's good with that, so we can keep some notes. Uh, tried to contact a couple of people. Oh, let me see, Joanne, mental health advisory.
I'm not even sure. I mean, I wasn't ever contacted this year on that or anything. And see, when I was on it before, they took the, all the counties off.
Really?
So, yeah.
Tell anything about?
Patty, do you, did you actually get a request for that? Yeah. Uh-huh. I mean, I'm willing to do it, but I don't think, I don't think it's really, I don't think they have the counties on there anymore. Okay.
And then the redevelopment commission, I've uh talked to Matt. I think Matt is willing to take the, my, see his dad, Matt Council.
He's happy to help us.
Alrighty, appreciate that. So that leaves uh Natalie, Mark Trailer, Jerry Harvstrick, Mike Healy. Tom Richardson. Oh, and we have. Well, our. Okay, this is the different, and also, yeah, the, we're gonna need another one for school board. For the redevelopment commission that we have to appoint. Now, is there, is there a term limits on there for Pam going off or? Yeah, or she going off? My, my, my perception there was that she, we needed to, yeah, it says previously held. Now, she. I don't know. Did she continue to serve on there or do they have something that they have to?
Damn.
But we really need to contact her to verify. And I thought maybe possibly Kyle Carnegas if he, you know, she's not interested, but we'll contact Pam and see. Give him something to do, so. Okay. Um. Yeah, we'll make contacts there and I'll, I'll be in touch. Yeah, I'll do that. I didn't print my printer quit, so.
We always try to get this list to you for that purpose so that you can verify.
Right.
And then we can get those in place for the first of the year.
Right. So these, these appointments will have to be put in place next meeting then, right? For January. Yep, okay. Okay. Any questions, comments on those appointments? Okay, so really no action on that, just see where we're at on there. Okay. Alright, additional appropriations. First one here, County General, Coroner. Oh. So. So the.
So on the.
Oh, additional appropriations.
It goes hand in hand with your schedule, so it's just part of the record.
Okay, so we need to approve the additional appropriations schedule for twenty twenty-one. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike Myers, second by Matt Meredith, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, got that. Now additional appropriations. They got a County General, Coroner, thirty-six hundred dollars, and jail, twenty thousand dollars, for a total of twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. And.
You want them both together?
Yeah, we can do them both together if that works.
Run for coroner is that perp that we talked about last meeting?
For Dr. Cullen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Looks like Gary's out of electricity.
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion and we approve these.
I'll second that.
A motion by Mike Smith, second, pardon. Motion by Dave Smith, second by Mike Sprinkle, all those in favors?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries unanimously. Sorry about that. Too many mics down the line here.
Probably hurt one of us feelings.
Uh, probably. Not sure which. Okay.
I'm still grinning, so it wasn't me.
Edit, uh, annex bond administrative fees, thirteen hundred dollars, SIDC, ten thousand, two hundred dollars, for a total of eleven thousand, five hundred dollars. So the edit, the annex, that's additional administration expenses not budgeted. Goes over. And then the S, SIDC CARES Act fees out of edit. That the five, the monies that have been in place. I was wondering what that.
I would move to approve both of these.
Dan, motion by Mike Sprinkle, second by Matt Meredith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries unanimously.
Question?
Okay.
That, annex bond administrative fees, where does that come out of?
Edit.
Huh? Okay.
Okay, health fund reimbursement for vaccines, Kathy, fifty-five thousand dollars, probably busy. Second, motion by Matt Meredith, second by Tony Duncin, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Public Defender Fee Fund, Public Defender, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay proper attorney claims. So this usually hits us every year on a bit, so.
I'll make the motion when we approve that request.
Motion by Joanne, second, second by Mike Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries unanimously. Westgate TIF, fifth Westgate expense, thirteen hundred dollars. And that will be coming out of that Westgate TIF fund of, stands at two, two oh four, was it, or two?
Move to approve this.
Second. Okay, motion by Mike Sprinkle, second by Tony. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Mini corrections. You have office supplies of two hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-eight cents, drug testing, ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents, for a total of ten thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. And this will uh deplete the ninety-two hundred fund? Sorry, Diane.
I'm right here. That's okay. Um, it's the balance of um funds that have suspended by the end of the year. And we're just gonna reappropriate those. I have permission from the state to do that, and on advisory board, Joanne was there at our meeting in September to move those monies to those categories so that we could use them, so that we're not returning any funds back to the state.
Okay.
So this, these will be spent for the end of the year.
Okay.
So, yep. That's what this is. By what extent is the October meeting, but the state didn't get the paperwork back to me before the deadline, so.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Your motions are approved. So moved. Motion by Tony, second. Second by Mike Sprinkle, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we've got some transfers. Davis County Security Center from household and janitorial to repair and maintenance of five thousand dollars.
Make a motion, we approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Dave Smith, second by Joanne, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries unanimously. Uh, four D. From furniture and fixtures to phone, thirteen hundred dollars, and from investigation and research to office supplies of thirty-five hundred dollars.
I'll make the motion when we approve that request for the transfer.
Motion by Joanne. Second by Matt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries unanimously. Okay, anything else? Comments, questions, or anything?
Grant?
We, just a brief update on this building. Um, I mentioned to Patty ahead of the meeting, but we do have a couple of the subcontractors that we did, uh, that we didn't use, uh, when we took over the contract from Jasper. This would have been in the February, March timeframe. We do have a couple of those that um are still loose ends, so to speak, meaning that they, they feel like they've, they're, they're owed certain monies and haven't gotten those funds. So we don't know what that looks like yet. Um, one of those, we don't plan on paying anything, but one of those, we may pay something based on the work that they did. So it's just informational for, for now. Uh, Michael Taylor's not here, but I mentioned it to Patty and just wanted to say to you that there are a couple of uh loose ends that aren't tied up with some of those that we did not continue forward with. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Are we still in line with the budget on this building or where are we at on that?
I believe that is the case every time I have asked. The owner's rep, Michael Taylor, and Quackamook were sort of uh, I mean, how we said it, hard on.
We're reviewing that with them, um, working on final details, on final bills, where we're at on the budget with the appropriation and the cash. So that's ongoing. Um, some of those final numbers are still being calculated.
Is that something we can see?
Yes, once, uh, I mean, you can see the reports at any time. Um, we don't, we just don't have all the bills in and the final, as Grant alluded to.
I would just request that maybe we send something out pretty quickly so that they can see, now that we're in the building, that, that we're done. Um, we're gonna have to make some decisions specifically on those two subs, but um, I also think, I mean, there's gonna be some work done over here. And so I think it would be helpful if they have a picture of where we're at. I, I would like a picture of it as well.
The financial report um monthly, and at any time they can get a balance on any of the accounts. We don't have a final version to give you yet on the, on the uh, we can tell you where we're at as far as what's been processed. I can't tell you where we're at on that gray area, which is what they're talking about, what Grant's alluding to. I can't give you the details on that. I don't have them yet, so.
He, yeah, they didn't actually see what's been processed.
We can run a report. You can see the transactions to date. If you want to stop by my office, we can print that out for you today.
Okay. That would be helpful.
A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Dave Smith, second, second by Mike Myers, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Alright, thanks everybody. Have a good day.
James, thanks, Matt. See ya.
See you, Matt. Yep.